Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting and ask you to please rise and join in the invocation led by Commissioner Wayne Neal and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Dr. Peter Murphy.
Please join in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and please be seated. First item on the agenda, public comment period, and I would invite Ms. Margaret Herman up first, if you'll come up to the podium, and please state your name for the record when you get up, please.
Margaret Herman. Good evening, Commissioners. The following is in reference to item number forty-five, the King Park Pickleball Courts on tonight's agenda. I'm going to start by sharing a parable commonly attributed to Irving Zola. You and a friend are having a picnic at the side of a river. Suddenly you hear a shout from the direction of the water. A child is drowning. Without thinking, you both dive in, grab the child, and swim to shore. Before you can recover, you hear another child cry for help. You and your friend jump back in the river to rescue her as well. Then another struggling child drifts into sight, and another, and another. The two of you can barely keep up. Suddenly you see your friend waiting out of the water, seeming to leave you alone. "Where are you going?" you demand. Your friend answers, "I'm going upstream to tackle the guy who's throwing all these kids in the water." Many people in our community have been tirelessly jumping in the river, so to speak, for the last several months in order to save King Park, save the trees, save green space, save taxpayer money, save property values, save the peaceful sound of a neighborhood. We are here tonight. We are going upstream. If Glen County invested in a comprehensive park and recreation master plan, individual commissioners would not feel compelled to make a quick fix by finding money in the budget to solve Park and Recreation's latest squeaky wheel. Commissioners would easily direct the public to communicate with our Parks and Recreation Director, a person who earned her degree in Parks and Recreation from Clemson University and was hired by Glen County to run the department because she has twenty years of experience in the field. I propose we give the staff the necessary tools to do their jobs. With a comprehensive parks and recreation plan, all of the necessary data would be in the light, on the table. Resources would flow accordingly. Public input would be received, so buy-in to changes and improvements would be much easier. Nearly 2,000 people have signed a petition against adding six dedicated pickleball courts to King Park. Clearly, this is not a handful of disgruntled residents who live within 200 yards of the park. As all of the King Park neighbors know, the current dual-use court in King Park is busy just three mornings a week. If this was a restaurant, we would not triple the size of our establishment. We would encourage guests to make reservations or entice them to dine early by running an early bird special. The same philosophy should be applied to public resources. If, despite all of these desperate pleas, the county still feels it must do something about this court issue, we have three suggestions. The first two are very low cost. Number one, make all of the thirty-four courts in Glen County dual-use courts fair and square. This is the option the Board of Commissioners in Lewis, Delaware, decided upon. Option two, create an online reservation system, something my husband has to do every time he plays golf. I am sure he would prefer to simply show up any time, any day, and simply play on any course, but that is not a realistic option. This is not how most things in the world work, public or private. The final suggestion is more complicated and expensive, but seems to be a bit of a win-win solution. Relocate the dog park at Epworth to either Demery or Gascon. Use the current dog park footprint to build dedicated pickleball courts. By my estimate, seven courts could fit in this area. Please note, Epworth is ideal because it is not a residential area, so sound complaints would not be an issue. If needed, it appears there is some space available to create additional parking. Please do the right thing for all of the people you represent in Glen County. Fund a comprehensive parks and recreation plan. In conclusion, please do not go forward with a project that is nearly fifty percent over budget, does not have an allowance for noise abatement, and is unwanted by so many people in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Herman. Next speaker is George Ragsdale. If you'll come up, state your name for the record, please. In the meantime, Dave Austin. We got any AC in this room tonight? Okay, thank you.
George Ragsdale. Good evening. I will try to pick up where Peggy left off. I will try not to be redundant. In the initial presentation of the fiscal 2020 budget earlier this year, approximately $20,000 was included for doing maintenance on the courts in King Park and Epworth. Somehow, at that meeting, the scope changed from a maintenance project to one of building new pickleball courts, and the budget was increased to $150,000. When Commissioner Browning asked at that meeting, "Where will the additional funds come from?", Mr. Hours said, "We'll find it somewhere." That somewhere has yet to be disclosed. Now, what's before you is a project for which the lowest bid is almost fifty percent higher than that $150,000 budget. And what's more, the scope of work that's behind that low bid of $221,000 does not include the removal of the nineteen trees that were identified by the county as having to be removed for safety reasons, understanding that the county's going to do that, but county resources are not free. More importantly, there is no soundproofing provided in the scope of work at all. Another item on your agenda tonight is the demolition of a building in Demery Park. What's not on your agenda with respect to that item is the idea of building a pavilion in Demery Park in place of the demolished building. Some of you may remember that this project was before you almost two years ago, when you were presented with a situation very similar to the King Park issue before you tonight. The budget for the pavilion in Demery Park was about $110,000, and the low bid came in just under $300,000. Besides the obvious cost issues, both of these projects represent something that's never been presented and discussed with the community at large. Is there a demand for them? That's not been demonstrated. It's not been quantified. Where is the data to support the position that they're needed? Where is the data to support spending taxpayer money? Funding a master planning effort for the almost sixty parks in Glen County would cost far less than either of these projects, and as Peggy said, would be a way to gain community buy-in to the plan that would unburden you as commissioners from having to decide each one of these as they come up. With almost 2,000 people saying that they don't want additional courts constructed in King Park, and granted, they are for a variety of reasons, several viable alternatives have been offered. I hope that you will, tonight, when you come to this item on the agenda, not elect either item one or item three, option one or option three. I hope you will reject the bids for the pickleball courts and seek other alternatives. And instead, fund a master planning effort for all the parks and recreation areas in Glen County so that the system can be optimized in a way that benefits all of our residents and not just a few. I want to make sure on the record that it's clear that the people that are opposed to using King Park are absolutely not opposed to playing pickleball, as has been said. We're opposed to the use of King Park. Passive green space that has been increased in recent months by the county by opening the north end of it, but it's passive green space that we would like to see retained that way. One of the underlying issues here is that tennis players and pickleball players don't want to share the same court. Admittedly, when I look at it, and I don't play either one, but when I look at it, it is a little bit difficult to see the one striping on top of the other. So dedicated courts is probably a good alternative. Just don't put them in King Park.
Thank you, George. That completes the public comment period.
Mr. Chairman, I move to add item thirteen point one to the consent agenda to approve the memorandum of understanding with the City of Brunswick and the Georgia Department of Transportation to continue the comprehensive cooperative urban transportation planning process known as the Brunswick Area Transportation Study.
Second. Commissioners, we have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor of adding to item, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Public hearing, alcoholic beverage license. Public hearings will be limited to thirty minutes for each opposing side, with five minutes allocated each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Item one, consider the issuance of a 2020 provisional alcoholic beverage license to Leslie Yeumans for Satella Grocery Incorporated, DBA Satella Grocery, 6892 New Jessup Highway, Brunswick, Georgia. The license is to sell malt beverages and wines not for consumption on premise of a grocery store. Sunday sales permitted. Leslie Yeumans licensee, the professional license does not entitle the applicant to sell alcoholic beverages until all necessary work at the premises has been inspected and approved by Glen County, a certificate of occupancy issued, and the alcoholic beverage license issued by the licensed officer. Occupation tax, police chief. Captain Jay?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman. The applicant meets all requirements required by the ordinance for issuing some license, and they are present here in the office.
Could they stand? Could applicant stand? Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone in opposition to the application, if you'll step forward to the podium, and please state your name. Anyone in opposition to the application? Okay, seeing none, hearing none. Anyone in favor of the application? Anyone in favor of the application want to step forward? Seeing none, hearing none. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a question here.
Sure.
Excuse me. Why do we issue provisional license and then have to wait for all this other stuff to be done? Is there a particular reason for that?
Commissioners, what a provisional license does, it allows the applicant to get the license and then build their facility, knowing they'll have a license once they finish it. Once they finish it and get all their permits, they'll get their CO, then they'll come in and see the occupation tax officer and inform them to be issued the license. But this just gives them the assurance that once they build their facility, they'll get the license.
And/or, I guess, renovate their existing building. They're going to put in bar shelves or whatever to accommodate this addition?
Absolutely. And if the board were not to issue it, they'd know in advance, or at least they would know what their options are in terms of not building out the renovations or building the facility.
Okay, so what happens if we issue these provisional licenses and then something doesn't work out, or he doesn't do it right, or whatever? I mean, are they revocable?
They would not get their license to sell and distribute alcohol.
You can't sell alcohol on this.
Not yet.
You've got to get the permanent license to sell the alcohol.
That's correct. So they will get the provisional if the board approves it tonight, and then they'll go through the construction or renovation process, and then once they get their CO, they'll come back in with inspections to make sure they've complied with all the county's ordinances regarding renovations, construction, et cetera. And if they do that, and they'll be inspected through our normal process, then they'll get their final license.
And this would apply to a full vertical build or addition to an existing building?
That's correct. Thank you.
I have one question. How long do they have? I mean, let's say they decided not to do it right now. Do they keep the provisional license forever until they decide?
No, sir. I don't know the exact time they're open for. I want to say six months, but I think Ms. Trina Rankin's in the, I think it's six months. Six months. I think she's shaking her head yes. That's six months. So if they don't complete their renovations in six months, then the provisional is null and void.
What would they do then? Have to come back and get another one?
That's correct. Sometimes, there has been a situation where they'll request an extension of the provisional, and administratively, that'll be granted. But if it expires without it being extended, then it'll be null and void, and they'll have to come back and get another provisional. But staff does and has in the past extended it out if the applicant is working in good faith to conclude or finish the project.
So it's totally up to the applicant to be in compliance with what Glen County says, check, 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 down the list, and, you know, go out and do what, a final inspection on it?
Absolutely.
If something's not right, then they got to get it right. And, I mean, suppose they go past, at that point, go past the six months. Maybe extend it, or say, "You got to fix that"?
That's correct. So if they don't comply with all the county's ordinances, they don't get their certificate of occupancy issued, and they don't pass all the tests, they will not be issued the final license, they can't sell or distribute the alcohol. At the end of six months, if they come in and address that with the occupation tax officer and are moving forward towards it, and they are getting close, then occupation tax officer may extend that a little further. We've done, again, we've done that in an instance out by Canal Road where the applicant was working, and they just hadn't finished it yet. So if there's any issues with construction or delays, they're not out the provisional. They just have to come in and ask us and show us that they're working towards that completion date. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the issuance of the 2020 provisional alcohol license, beverage licenses to Satella Grocery Inc., DBA Satella Grocery at 6892 New Jessup Highway, Brunswick, Georgia, 31523. This is for the issuance of a provisional license pursuant to the ordinance section two dash three dash twenty-one to sell malt beverages and wines not for consumption on premise of a grocery store. Sales permitted on Sunday.
I second that motion. Second that motion.
Commissioners, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? I'll call the motion. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay, that is unanimous, and that passed. Item two, consider the issuance of a 2020 provisional alcoholic beverage license to Daniel Wilson for Max Barbecue and Produce LLC, 6900 New Jessup Highway, Brunswick, Georgia. The license is to sell malt beverages and wines for consumption on premise of a restaurant. Sunday sales permitted. Daniel Wilson licensee. The provisional license does not entitle the applicant to sell alcoholic beverages until all necessary work at the premises has been inspected and approved by Glen County, a certificate of occupancy issued. of occupancy issued, and alcoholic beverage license issued by the licensed officer. Captain?
Yes, sir. Several of my colleagues said it might be easier to hear me if I come to the podium, so I wanted to do that. Chairman, Commissioners, the applicant meets all requirements required by the ordinance for issuing of a license, and they are here and present in the audience.
Okay. Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Anyone that opposes the application, if you'll step forward to the podium? Anyone opposing the application, please step forward. Seeing none, hearing none. Anyone in favor of the application who wants to step forward and speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor of the application? Okay, don't see any. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'll for a motion that we issued a 2020 provisional alcoholic beverage license to Daniel Wilson for Max Barbecue and Produce LLC as outlining item two.
Second.
Commissioners, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is six, four. All those opposed? Same, and one against. Thank you, Commissioners. Item three. Consider the issuance of a 2020 provisional alcoholic beverage license to James Weston Cow for Brunswick Hospitality of Virginia LLC, DBA Home Two Suites, 475 Millennium Boulevard, Brunswick, Georgia. The license is to sell distilled spirits, malt beverages, and wines for consumption on premise of a hotel motel in room service. Sunday sales permitted. James Weston Cow, Weston Sco, you can correct me in a minute, licensee. The provisional license does not entitle the applicant to sell alcoholic beverages until all necessary work at the premises has been inspected and approved by Glen County, a certificate of occupancy issued, and the alcoholic beverage license issued by the licensed officer. Jay?
Chairman, Commissioners, the applicant meets all requirements required by ordinance for issuing of a license, and they are present in the audience.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, so anyone that opposes the application, if you'll step forward to the podium. Anyone that opposes, step forward. Seeing none, any, anyone that is in favor and wants to speak in favor, step forward to the podium. Anyone in favor? Okay, Commissioners?
Make motion to issue a 2020 provisional alcoholic beverage license to James Weston Cow, Brunswick Hospitality, Virginia, DBA Home Two Suites on Millennium Boulevard, Brunswick.
Commissioners, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? I'll call the motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, Commissioners. Item four. Consider the issuance of a 2020 provisional alcoholic beverage license to James Weston Cow for Brunswick Hospitality of Virginia LLC, DBA Hilton Garden Inn, 475 Millennium Boulevard, Brunswick, Georgia. The license is to sell distilled spirits, malt beverages, and wines for consumption on premise of a hotel motel in room service. Sunday sales permitted. James Weston Cow, licensee. The provisional license does not entitle the applicant to sell alcoholic beverages until all necessary work at the premises has been inspected and approved by Glen County, a certificate of occupancy issued, and the alcoholic beverage license issued by the licensed officer. Jay?
Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. The applicant meets all requirements as required by the ordinance for issuing of a license and is present in the audience.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Anyone wants to speak out against, wants to oppose a license application, if you'll step up to the podium? Anyone wants to speak against the application? Okay. Anyone wants to speak in favor of the application? Step up to the podium. Okay. Anyone wants to speak in favor? Okay, seeing none. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the issuance of a 2020 provisional alcohol beverage license to Brunswick Hospitality of Virginia LLC, 475 Millennium Boulevard, Brunswick. This is for the issuance of a provisional license pursuant to section 2-3-21 to sell distilled spirits, malt beverages, and wines for consumption on premise of a hotel motel in room service on your sales permitted.
Second. Commissioners have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Item six. Consider the issuance of a 2020 provisional alcoholic beverage license to James Weston Cow for Brunswick Hospitality of Virginia LLC, DBA Hilton Garden Inn, 475 Millennium Boulevard, Brunswick, Georgia. The license is to sell malt beverages and wines not for consumption on premise of a retail gift shop. Sunday sales permitted. James Weston Cow, licensee. The provisional license does not entitle the applicant to sell alcoholic beverages until all necessary work at the premises has been inspected and approved by Glen County, a certificate of occupancy issued, and the alcoholic beverage license issued by the licensed officer. Jay?
Chairman, Commissioners, the applicant meets all requirements as required by ordinance for issuing of a license and is present in the audience.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone opposes the application? If you want to step up to the podium? Anyone opposed? Okay. Anyone want to speak in favor of the application? Please step up to the podium. Anyone in favor? Okay, Commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just for point of order, I'd like to point out we skipped number five. They all look the same, but we skipped five. But that being the case...
Did I?
Yes, sir. I would like to make a motion to issue the 2020 provisional alcohol beverage license to James Weston Cow, Brunswick Hospitality, Virginia, DBA Hilton Garden Inn on Millennium Boulevard, malt beverages, wines, not for consumption on the present, to sell malt beverages and wines not for consumption on premise of a retail gift shop. Gift shop and they can take it back to the room, I guess, or?
Take it back to the room.
Yeah. Huh.
They've got in-room service in one of the rooms.
Yeah. Maybe we need to have a little discussion about that. What, can somebody, I thought this was just in the gift shop and take it to their, their room. What do you think there, Acting Chief?
Mr. Weston Cow, could you come up to the podium, please?
Yeah, I, as you come, just, all these, the last three look very similar for the Hilton Garden Inn, and I believe we skipped number five, but number, number four was for room service delivery. Help me, help me understand the retail gift shop. What?
No, good question. First of all, it's a pleasure to be here. And the, it's called the Little Gift Shop, the Market, and it's where guests can purchase a little thing of wine or beer and take to their room. You're exactly right.
So this is for consumption on premise, not for, to, to take it off premise?
Right. We won't have people come and shopping, like a grocery store, and take it off premise.
Right.
It's strictly for our guests in-house.
Okay. Doesn't really stipulate that here, Mr.?
Yeah, it does. It says on premise. Consumption on premise.
It says not for consumption on premise of a retail gift shop.
On the premise of the gift shop. They can't open it and drink it in the gift shop.
Right. You're not going to crack it open in front of the front desk and, and do that, but it is...
What do you think there, Mr. Attorney? Is that clear enough? I mean, I don't want to make too fine a point out of this.
It is, Commissioners. I mean, I think it is.
Okay.
And there, and number four also gives them the ability to sell in hotel, in-room service.
Right.
So, I mean, either way, they'll be able to take it to the room. And they don't necessarily have to take this to the room. They can buy it and, you know, take it off premise, you know, like it was any other kind of retail shop. So it's not restricted just in-room service as a retail shop.
Okay.
And we do have little patios there that they can go outside of the hotel and enjoy themselves, enjoy this great Georgia weather and all that good stuff.
All right. Any other questions, anybody?
Just a point of order again because they're so similar. In, in number three that we voted for, it, it said that it would be hotel motel in-room service. But also, when we get to number four, it says hotel motel in-room service. What's, what's the difference between those two applications?
It's a different hotel.
We have two hotels. It's one big building. If you're standing right in front of it, split it down the middle. On the right side is Home Two Suites by Hilton. On the left side is the Hilton Garden Inn. It's the first dual property for Brunswick, so we're excited to be here.
And I remember reading that. I just lost track of it in this. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. So let me start again. I make a motion to issue the 2020 provisional alcoholic beverage license to Mr. Weston Cow for Brunswick Hospitality, Virginia, DBA Hilton Garden Inn to sell malt beverages and wines in the retail gift shop.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? I'll call the motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Item five. Consider the issuance of a 2020 provisional alcoholic beverage license to James Weston Cow for Brunswick Hospitality of Virginia LLC, DBA Hilton Garden Inn, Home Two Suites Restaurant, 475 Millennium Boulevard, Brunswick, Georgia. The license is to sell distilled spirits, malt beverages, and wines for consumption on premise of a restaurant. Sunday sales permitted. James Weston Cow, licensee. The provisional license does not entitle the applicant to sell alcoholic beverages until all necessary work at the premises has been inspected and approved by Glen County, a certificate of occupancy issued, and the alcoholic beverage license issued by the licensed officer. Jay?
Chairman, Commissioners, the applicant meets all requirements required by ordinance for issuing of a license, and as you see, is here in the audience.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing. Anyone opposing this license, if license application, step up to the podium? Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, anyone want to speak in favor? Step up to the podium. Anyone in favor wants to speak? Okay, Commissioners?
I have a, another question, sir. You described how this is a, I can't remember how, what you called it, but a, a building divided into...
A dual hotel.
Dual hotel. Do they share a restaurant? Because it looks like the application here is for both the Garden Inn and the Home Two Suites Restaurant.
Yeah, the restaurant is located in the Hilton Garden Inn.
Okay. But I guess, just to be clear, it also says Home Two Suites Restaurant.
Because of the joins, again, all guests are welcome to come into the Garden Inn and eat at the restaurant along with the public off the street.
All right. I think that's clear. All right. I make a motion to issue a provisional alcoholic 2020 beverage license to Mr. Weston Cow, Brunswick Hospitality, DBA Hilton Garden Inn slash Home Two Suite Restaurant to sell distilled spirits, malt beverages, and wines in that restaurant.
Commissioners, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll call the motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, Commissioners. Got your provisional? Thank you. Public hearing establishment of fees. Item seven. Consider adopting an amendment to sections 2-16-10, 2-16-61, 2-16-62, and 2-16-63 of the Glen County Water and Sewer Ordinance as proposed by the Brunswick-Glen County Joint Water and Sewer Commission to revise metering provisions to allow flat rate billing and require lockable plugs for sewer-only accounts that are delinquent in payment, to update phrasing to reflect current billing practices to bill by gallons of water measured, to allow for the crediting of non-residential deposits after 60 months of consecutive payment, and to update the leak adjustment policy to simplify the process and for other purposes. Mr. Andrew Burrows, Director of Joint Water and Sewer, going to present tonight?
Yes, sir. We're looking for four adjustments tonight. The first one is to allow sewer flat rate billing. We currently bill sewer-only customers on flat rate bills, but it's currently not allowed by the ordinance, so that is cleaning that up. The other part of that revision would be to allow us to install lockable plugs on sewer-only accounts that are delinquent. The way we bill everyone else for sewer is off of their water meter. However, if they do not have a water meter from us, we have to bill them flat rate. We also, if they don't pay their bill, shut their water meter off, but they don't have a water meter, so we have no way to disconnect their service presently. So we're installing a lockable plug will allow us to disconnect the service in the event of delinquency. We will hopefully not have to use that provision. We will be sending letters to all those individuals who are delinquent requesting they come in and get on a payment arrangement before we have to do this, but we have been in communication with the Department of Public Health about these procedures. The current billing practice is to bill by gallons of water measured. Currently, it says we are to bill by thousands of gallons of water measured. We started billing by gallons about two years ago to eliminate fluctuations in your bill from minor discrepancies in your usage. So if you used to bill, if you used 3,999 gallons one month, you got billed for 3,000 gallons. If you used the next month 4,001 gallons, you got billed for 5,000 gallons because it rolled over twice. So now you get the same bill if you use only two gallons different. And then, to update, the credit of non-residential deposits after 60 months. Currently, ordinance only allows us to credit residential deposits. However, we have non-residential customers that have been paying for 40 years, and they have still got deposits on hand that we need to credit back to their accounts. And then, to update the leak adjustment policy, currently, there's a very confusing leak adjustment policy that I think you need a differential calculus degree to understand. So we're going to simplify that, so it's, you're just going to get half back of what your overage is, is when you have a leak, and it also will allow us to give leak adjustments to people that have existing balances. Currently, we are not allowed to do that, and just because you happen to be a month behind on your bill does not mean you had a leak, didn't have a leak, so we need to be able to give those customers these leak adjustments.
Commissioners, anyone got any questions for Director Burrows?
I got one. Back to the leak deal. How would you know? I mean, would you just automatically, if you've got somebody that's delinquent and it was due to a leak, and run through that little part again about how you would credit back to the...
Currently, if you come in and you are requesting a leak adjustment and you have no amount of arrears on your account, we will work a leak adjustment for you. However, if you have $2 in arrears because your bill was $38 last month and you paid 36, the ordinance will not allow us to give you a leak adjustment if you happen to get a $600 bill the next month because your service line broke. This adjustment will allow us to give those people the leak adjustments just because they're a little bit behind on their bill, they still had a leak. So it, basically, they'll get half of the amount of the overage back. So if they, in that instance, if their normal monthly bill is $50, there's a $550 gap, that's $275 you get back on your bill for fixing your leak and providing proof that it's corrected.
Andrew, on the commercial deposits that have been paying for 40 years now, all of a sudden, we're going, is, is that's going to be in the form of a credit on their account?
Yes, sir.
Rather than, you have any idea what the financial impact of that?
Overall, between residential and commercial customers, we have about 3 million in deposits. I would suspect less than a million of that is commercial customers. Because most of them, they have been in business for that long, had $40 deposits back when they created.
And that money set aside so it's not being...
We're not using it.
You're not using it, you have an account for it, so...
They've been paying their bills, so we don't need to hold that in case they decide to not pay their bills.
Yeah. Me as well. So, okay, Commissioners, y'all have any other questions for Mr. Andrews, Mr. Burrows? Okay, what do you want to do?
Public hearing.
Oh, it's public hearing. Okay, we did a public hearing. Okay, we did a public hearing. Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone in opposition to the establishment of these new fees and ordinance change, step up to the podium. State your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Julian Smith. I am in favor of all of the changes, but I think there is a problem with section two, subparagraph three. This is the one that begins, rather in the middle, we're told that a cleanout plug will then be made accessible to the utility for the application of a lockable plug. Now, let me stop in the middle of that sentence and point out that this ordinance, revised ordinance does not specify by whom the cleanout will be made accessible. Now, by cleanout, they're referring to something that's already installed in the ground, I assume. It's in the ground. And the owner of the property is being required, I believe, to make this accessible. So I think this needs to be modified to make it clear it's the owner that will make it accessible to the utility. And then we're told for the application of a lockable plug. I believe the language should be for the installation of a lockable plug. Would you agree with that, Mr. Burrows? For the application is something you're applying for? Or you apply bronzer to get a...
If we close the plug, we've applied the plug to the line.
You will install it on the line, I believe. And I would like you to discuss for the benefit of the public and for the benefit of Joint Water and Sewer, the language that ends in the last sentence. Property owners of existing locations without such a cleanout will be required to install the device at their own expense if delinquent account actions are warranted. They will be required to install it themselves or have Joint Water and Sewer install it?
We can install it if they choose to pay us to install it.
All right. Now, I'd like you to consider the health, the public health and safety implications of putting a block on a sewer line so people, if they flush the toilet, what happens? This is forcing people to stop using sanitary facilities, to stop taking showers, to stop flushing a toilet. Is that correct? This is...
It would severely limit their ability to do something.
Yeah, but it won't limit their ability to discharge the waste into the backyard, into a hole in the ground, et cetera. So I think everything else is fine in this, but I think that particular section needs to be reviewed. So I would recommend that you approve everything else and send this back for some revision, unless you're happy with it, with vague or inaccurate language. And you do have a lot of ordinances that make very little sense or that don't quite make sense. So what's the problem? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Burrows, you got anything you want to add to any of that? Go ahead. Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to speak up in opposition? In whole or part in opposition? Okay. Anyone want to speak in favor of this change in ordinance? Anyone want to speak in favor of this change in ordinance? Okay, seeing none, hearing none. Commissioners? What do you want to do?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, I did have a question, kind of follow what Mr. Smith was talking about, because I was thinking about that same thing. What if you have a landlord that is including the water in the bill, but he's not paying the bill on behalf of the people who live there?
That's not something we come across often, but certainly it could occur. We haven't had anybody bring that to us, but certainly if they can find documentation, they've paid their landlord who decided not to pay us, we could potentially work with them on that situation. That's certainly possible, but it's not something we come across on a common basis.
So you're saying that each apartment would have its own area where you could lock it then or unlock it?
Well, in theory, it would be from each building, but we don't have any apartment complexes that are sewer-only customers. We have less than 500 sewer-only customers and they're all residential. So it would be typically on a grinder pump because the reason they need sewer service is because they can't gravity it anywhere to a septic tank, so they would pump that back to our system. So those are all residential. We have no sewer-only customers that are multifamily. We do have, Pinova's a sewer-only customer, but that's a little bit of a different scenario.
Right. And I'm, I mean, I'm for this, but I do see that scenario, I do have that concern that, and why you don't have them right now. It is a concern.
We do have some landlords that have the accounts in their names, even for single-family residential rentals, but the overwhelming majority of them get the tenant to put the utilities in their name.
That does seem like it needs some better wording to me, but I mean, this is very important, so I don't want to stop this because of that, but I would, I would hope that you all could clear that up.
Yes, sir.
Maybe with policies in-house.
You certainly do that. Yes, sir.
To that end, I would offer a motion to adopt the amendment to section 2-16-10, 2-16-61, 2-16-62, and 2-16-63 of the Glen County Water and Sewer Ordinance as proposed by the Brunswick-Glen County Joint Water and Sewer Commission as outlined in item seven.
Commissioners, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Andrew, I would, you know, there's not a really easy solution to this. And, you know, people's not paying their bills, all the other customers have to absorb that cost. And, you know, I was over there for two years, we were talking about this when I was over there, and it's just no easy way to handle it, but if this thing passes tonight, how about continue to reevaluate, see if there's some other better way to handle this, because I share, I think we all share the concerns if someone doesn't have access to sewer and they're in a house, we're going to have potential health issues within the community. So if y'all could just promise us you'd do that, and we're going to help you try to move forward and we keep looking for a better solution. So, okay. Commissioners, we have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, Andrew. Public hearing, land use, item eight, ZM 4224 Pot Liquor Farm. Consider their request to rezone a 7.42 acre property at 136 Pot Liquors Place on Blythe Island from R20, one-family residential and conservation-preservation to forest agricultural with conditions limiting uses and conservation-preservation. The applicant is proposing to operate a commercial farm to include field crops, truck gardening products, fruit and nut trees, poultry for egg production, and bees for honey production. Parcel ID 03-06708, Pot Liquor Farm LLC, owner and applicant. This applicant has requested to defer the application in public hearing. Pam?
Yes, sir. Chairman and Commissioners, good evening. I'm Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. The applicant has requested your consideration to defer this application so that they can work and refine their proposal before it comes to you all. So that is something you all need to decide, and staff is ready to make the presentation if that is what you decide.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I certainly, it's up to the commission to whether we want to discuss this tonight and have a public hearing item. I don't care one way or the other, but I do believe that we should honor the applicant's request to defer this. I don't know that in the five years that I've been on this board that we've ever denied a deferral. In eight to 10 years I've served on the Mainland Planning Commission, I don't believe we ever denied the first referral, I mean, deferral. If it gets to two or three deferrals, then I think we cut it off there, but an initial deferral, I think that if we don't honor that, I think we tend to set a precedent that we don't want to have to live with.
You know, Commissioner Brunson, I agree entirely with you that we ought to honor the deferral here, but I would have the hope that in the period of time before it comes back to us next, there might be some agreement achieved between the two parties here that would be a reasonable compromise that would allow the applicant to do what they've been doing in a reasonable fashion and maybe take the most concerning and advanced requests off the table to placate the neighbors who seem to be troubled particularly by the concerns regarding a commercial restaurant enterprise and/or alcohol sales and/or an event venue next to them in a residential zoned area. So I'm in agreement with you, but hopefully we could, we could see the parties get together and resolve this amicably so it doesn't become, you know, an issue that we need to come to some draconian solution that, you know, overwhelmingly favors one side over the other because, you know, the minimal farming activities that I understand are out there now seem to be relatively harmless in my opinion. But the more advanced proposals of, that I mentioned, the farm-to-table restaurant, alcohol sales, and/or event menus, I can see where they would be a concern in a residential area.
And Pam, for clarification, would it be possible for the applicant to come back and ask for a special use permit with existing zoning so that the potential, rather than changing the zoning that would open up the possibility in the future to come back and ask for restrictions to be lifted from this, can we leave it as a residential zoning with special, and I'm asking, I don't...
Yes, sir. I would ultimately defer to the county attorney. Historically, what we've done, if that's what we want to do, is actually do a plan development text where you have the current uses of the residential zoning and you just add specifically what uses you want versus the request before you this evening is to go to forest agricultural. So I do believe that the request can be amended to really constrain what they're asking for and make sure that it's something that's palatable to the board.
And in that, we would, we would want to make sure that not only when we agreed to something like that, it would be binding henceforth, that it wouldn't open a door to other changes or open the door for other people to use this as a precedent for the, for requests that they would want to make. And I agree with Commissioner Murphy that it would be great if they, both sides could get together and resolve this to something that everyone is at least semi-comfortable with, maybe, you know, maybe looking at more options for resolution here, so...
Yes, sir. And I know the applicant received some feedback at the Mainland Planning Commission, which was part of the impetus for them to request deferral this evening. So staff will be happy to work with them and suggest a neighborhood meeting where they can, in an informal setting, talk about concerns and issues and possibly come to some consensus.
Pam, Mr.
I ask these people if that's possible. There are a lot of people who came to this public hearing. You should apologize to them for the way this has been handled.
Buddy, we understand that, but it is a board discretion whether they want to proceed, and we've been through this a lot of times, so... Pam, do you know why the applicant had asked for deferral?
Yes, sir. Based on feedback from the Planning Commission and some subsequent public comments that staff received and passed along to them, they wanted to refine their application and potentially put in some self controls that would respond to those issues raised by the neighbors.
Okay, so, so they're actually looking to redo the application? I mean, that's my words, but...
Yes, sir. I don't know at this point if they were thinking about potentially changing the request of FA such as Commissioner Neal brought up. That is one option, but they definitely wanted to be sensitive to the concerns brought before the Planning Commission and put in controls that they thought would achieve that.
And if they, if they change their application, amended, does that mean that it goes back through Mainland Planning again before it would come back to us?
I'm going to defer to Esquire Mumford.
Commissioners, if they do change it into a PD text, I would recommend just sending it back down, letting the Planning Commission...
What about, what about less significant changes than that?
I think we'd have to look at the ordinance, whether or not this would even qualify for a special use or conditional use as far as, you know, what they're trying to do. And if that's not the case, then I think the director is correct that you'd be looking at a PD text which would allow both with those conditions and restrictions on it.
And I know we're going to go into a public hearing or maybe open it for public comment, I don't know, but...
Not necessarily.
Well, and not necessarily, but, but I am concerned about those, those of you that are here in opposition to it, you know, we want to make sure that we're hearing you, and we don't want to waste your time to require you to have to come to multiple meetings, but I guess I would like, I would like to be able to hear from at least someone that they think that this is a viable option for...
Well, hold on just a minute. If, if the board, if, if the applicant is going to substantially change their application in some way, we're not sure what we public, you know, what we're commenting on. I mean, we're commenting on the application. If it stays like it is, well, we can have the public hearing tonight. Okay? I mean, there's no reason, and that's why I ask if you know what they want to do. I think I heard somebody at one time that they just want to buy a little bit of time and bring it back. Well, if they just want to buy a little bit of time and bring it back, we can hear it tonight.
Yes, sir.
We can make our case tonight. But if this application, if they want to pull it and if they want to change it substantially, but, but, you know, my opinion, I mean, the number one thing in here is they want to go from residential to FA, forest agriculture. And if they take it away and bring it back FA, you know, we're missing opportunity tonight to go ahead and discuss that.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's the big issue. That is the big elephant in the room, and, and I'm ready to go ahead and talk about it, but if they can bring it, if they're going to change that somehow and go back to the Planning Commission, we have always granted, we have always... Planning Commission, we have always granted, we have always granted deferrals. The application belongs to the applicant, and that's just the way it is. But let's be real about it, I mean, if they're going to change it...
Mr. Chairman, in full candor, I spoke to Mr. John McQuig, who is the agent for the applicant last week. I can tell you I do not know his mind and everything that he thinks. I can tell you that when we spoke, he wanted to go back to the owners that wanted to use the property and talk about things such as a limit to the number of chickens, potential limit to where the chickens were located on the property, potential change to, I think, a commercial farm stand, whether or not that was allowed for sales from the property. So that's what we spoke about. I did not tell him, because as you said, it is the applicant's application to put forward to you all, I did not tell him it had to be changed from FA to a PD. But we did speak about that possibility and about options to more strictly define the allowable uses to make sure there was a sense of, that there was an understanding of the scope of what they wanted to do on the site.
Sure. Okay. I mean, if we go through a public hearing tonight and we turn this down, he can still come back with some kind of different application, or he can't?
For one year, he cannot come back. For one year, this property cannot have a request before the Board of Commissioners.
If we hear it the way it is now?
If you hear it the way it is now and it's denied, he cannot come back for one year.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, y'all have any other questions for Pam?
No, but I would like to comment. I think this application has a lot of problems with it. I had the opportunity to visit out there with the neighbors and look at it. I do agree with Commissioner Brunson, though. We have set a precedence of deferring, giving it one more chance to see if something can be worked out. I would say to the applicant, something substantial would have to be worked out in order to, at least in my view, have that for me to support it.
I am in full concurrence of what Commissioner Quinn just said. As somebody who is doing a urban farming project right now, I'm in support of the concept, but it would be hard pressed for me to support this at this site because it seems like a radical change from what they're doing now and what they're moving to. And so if they do not change this in a real way and after speaking in earnest with the neighbors, it would be DOA as far as I'm concerned.
Yes, sir. And that's one reason in speaking to the applicant that they didn't want to set it date certain to come back to you all because they wanted to take as much time as it took to get an application before you for consideration.
How would that go, Pam, in regards to making sure that everybody's aware if it comes back to a public hearing or a zoning? Is there, would it go back through the initial, the same of procedure we've done so far, or is it just going to pop up on an agenda?
Because it's not date certain, we would re-advertise it and repost the property following our public hearing guidelines since it's not date certain.
And Commissioners, I'll also add on to that, that if you are to defer it this evening, you either need to, it'll be at the very next meeting, or you do need a date certain in your motion for the deferral. And that's in your ordinance.
You're saying we can't do that, or we need that?
You can and you do need it. So you would need to specify the date at which it would come back, and then on top of that, staff would also advertise for that.
The applicant here at all?
The agent is not here. I think some of the people involved with the project are here. I don't know that they were, I mean, I can ask them if they're willing to come up and answer any questions.
Hold on a second.
No, sir.
Aaron, maybe I didn't hear you right, but, you know, if they come back with, say, something other, I mean, substantially different, does it have to go back to the MPC?
I think you'd want to. I mean, if...
Well, if it does, how can we set a date about when it's going to come back to us?
Well, then I think your motion would be to remand it back down to the IPC for a new hearing process. That would be the action taken by the Board. If they were to come up with something substantially different, whether that's a conditional use, special use, or PD text, I would suggest that it be remanded back down by both the County Commission for, you know, because they would want, they would take it up and they would make a different recommendation potentially if it was something different.
Well, the problem is, we don't know what they're going to do. See? We don't know if they're going to change it to the extent it has to go back to MPC right now. So if we vote for a deferral...
So Commissioners, what I think would happen, if there were some potential middle ground and staff thought that might be a consideration, staff would let the Board know in advance of that date certain that this is being worked out, and the recommended motion would be to remand it back down to the Planning Commission for them to consider the revised application?
All right. Let's try this. Can we make a motion to defer this, to defer this application back to the MPC?
I think you can with instruction, but I think you'd want to, you know, tell them what their instruction is. Remand it back down to consider additional alternatives. I think that would be fine and appropriate if there were alternatives that the applicant wanted to consider.
Well, I mean, that's something we can certainly, I mean, if you say we can do it, why don't, that's something with some certainty to it. Why don't we remand it back to the MPC? And if they come in and do something, MPC can deal with it one way or the other. Okay. I've got a question. Pam, is there any comparable operations like this in that area on Blath Island?
No, sir. Not a, anything agriculturally grown out there is grown for the use of the owners.
Like a backyard garden?
Yes, sir.
Okay. For their own residential use?
Yes, sir. And originally, this was just for the one restaurant that's owned by the owners of this property, but that's what they had wanted to expand was to sell to a couple of other restaurants. But they did add a lot of other uses to that. I think the discussion with the applicant will be getting back to the core of what they actually want to achieve with that small farm.
Well, I mean, that's what I'm hearing.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, I mean, you've got folks over here at Homestead out there, and you're talking about raising all kinds of stuff. How many acres are we talking about?
Less than four.
Great. But, I mean, he's talking about having, he's got his own restaurant that he wants to supply...
Pam, Mr. Coleman, for correction, it's a 7.4 acre.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I think it's only uplands are less than four. Is that correct? I mean, seven includes the marsh.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, I mean...
I'm sorry. I was saying how much would be farmed.
Okay.
Okay. But what I'm saying, though, is, and there's no residents whatsoever on this. It'd be strictly just a big, excuse me, big field with groceries and all growing in it.
There's an existing single-family home on that property right now.
And a proposed new building to go on that property. It's not large, but it's...
Counsel, suffice it to say... Seven, a little over seven acres and five, close to five acres are going to be farmed. Is that a fair statement?
I think it's more like three and a half to four uplands. So I think it's, you know, it's not five acres that's being farmed.
The zoning on the property is currently residential.
Yes, sir.
If the zoning is proposed to be changed, then Counsel, I think it has to go back to the IPC. If the zoning is going to be changed to, I mean, MPC, if the zoning is going to be changed to industrial or freeway commercial, it's got to go back to the MPC. I don't think there's, I don't think there's any question that that's, so, I mean, I'd suggest we defer it and let the chips fall where they may. If the zoning is going to be changed, it's got to go back to the MPC.
Yeah. Okay. Do you need to make a motion to that effect? MPC.
Does the Board want to remand it back, or do you want to defer to a date certain to see if there's some middle ground?
If we defer to the next meeting or the first meeting in April, is that enough time? I mean, it is enough time for them to decide on what they want to do. But if they change it, is it enough time to go through the Mainland Planning Commission?
No, sir. I would, if you're going to defer it here, I do think the first meeting in April would be enough for the agent and applicant to know what they want to change it to. If they want to change it to something other than the request to FA, then we would, in a sense, start over with advertising and posting for the Mainland Planning Commission. So that would get it to the May Mainland Planning Commission.
Okay, so, question before us. Do we just defer it till our next meeting or remand it back? If we remand it back to the MPC, are we remanding what the application's all about now? Is that what goes back, or can they modify their application before it gets back to the MPC?
And Commissioners, that's a very good question, man. If it were remanded back, it would have to be remanded back with some specific instruction to look at something specific. And right now, I don't think the applicant has proposed anything specific to be taken up, so arguably, there's nothing for them to reconsider or to take up. So I think, given the circumstances, probably the most appropriate thing until the applicant decides if they want to look at something different other than the, I guess, the FA zoning, just to defer it to a date certain to your next meeting and give that opportunity, you know, give it an opportunity to work itself out.
You know what I think we just need to do? We just need to defer it to our next meeting, and if they don't do anything with it, if it comes back, we'll deal with it. And if they want to change it where it has to go back to the IPC, then we can pull it off our agenda. It'll go to, I mean, the MPC.
Yes, sir.
So we need a motion to defer.
Could I ask one more question first, please? Mr. Attorney, as a point of order, for this to be considered tonight, is it not a requirement for the applicant to be here, even if they're asking for a deferral? Unless they ask for it to be withdrawn, why isn't the applicant here?
Commissioners, I think the applicant is...
I see a hand. Thank you. All right.
Well, he's the owner?
He's the owner. I've been speaking with Mr. John McQuig, the agent for the applicant owner.
Okay, so he doesn't have an idea what they plan to do?
It looks like he does, so he's coming up to the podium.
All right. Real quick, we do plan to make some changes. We've discussed the Pete, Zach Gallin, sorry if I never live in historic downtown Brunswick, a little nervous. Yes, we do plan to make some changes. We've discussed the PD text to what we can do and to constrict it even more. We are inviting people from the island to come next Tuesday from 5:30 to 7:00 to get a closer look. Please, everybody come over. Y'all, too, please, get a look at everything. But yes, there will be changes. I promise you.
So why are you inviting the people from the island?
Blath Island.
Oh.
Yes. Yeah. Or even from St. Simons as well, Jekyll, more than welcome.
I guess there's more than one, right?
Yes, yes, but the island. Please, please, the gates open, doors open. We'd love to meet y'all and show the place to y'all, so.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you, thank you.
Dismissed, thanks.
We ready for a motion? We ready for a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. No, we're ready for a motion. Yeah? We are?
Yeah.
You ready?
Ready.
I'd like to make a motion. We defer this to the, what, the first meeting or the next meeting or either the first meeting in May?
April.
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 I mean, April.
April 2nd. April 2nd.
I'd take it April 2nd and give them plenty of time. Won't have no excuses then.
Yeah.
You need to make it clear what you're actually deferring, the public hearing. The application exists. You're not deferring the application. You're deferring consideration. I'm going, I'm going.
All right. Commissioners, we have a motion, a second on the floor. Any further discussion?
April 2nd.
Yeah, April 2nd. For all those that have shown up and wants to speak tonight, this was a possibility. I tried to explain to those that I could that if we decide to defer it, you know, we won't have a public hearing. Essentially, what you, if this thing gets changed to any degree of significance, then your discussion needs to be about what the actual application is that comes before us that we may vote on at that time. We're not going to vote on this application. Or I say we're not, they bring the same thing back, you know, but we're here that they're going to change this application in a significant way, or it sounds that way, and so we need to see what that is, understand it, and be ready to have a public hearing on it when we come back. So we're going to take a vote here tonight and see where that goes, but please understand. So Commissioners, we have a motion and a second on the table. I call the motion. All those in favor, signal a vibration, right hand. That is unanimous. This item's been deferred till April 2.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. And I may say that this is one of those deals, the possibilities that depending on what the applicant decides to do between now and then, it may get pulled or he may proceed for it. I can't speak for him, I'm just telling you, but we see these things happen. So, you know, if it comes back, it comes back. If it doesn't, it doesn't. But we'll all know. All right, thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman...
If, hold on just a second, Vice Chair, if you would. Any of you all that showed up for this public hearing that we didn't have tonight, if you want to go ahead and ease out, I know you probably don't want to sit here for the rest of the evening with us, but we'll take a moment if y'all want to ease out. Okay, Bill?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve consent attended General Business and Finance Committee with the exception of any item. Commissioner would like to have a poll for discussion.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Okay, I call the motion. All those in favor, signal a vibration, right hand. That is unanimous. We are going to move to General Business, item 44. Consider approving the reallocation of funding currently established within animal control facility purchase order to Ussery Rule Architects of St. Simons Island, Georgia, in the amount of $172,000, with a transfer of funds in the amount of $7,500 from the geotechnical allowance to the plans and specifications item to cover redesign expenses required by changes in the building codes in the time since substantial completion of the plans and submitted for review. Dave Austin.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm just trying to look right up here where it's off the chart. You got it? So I'm here before you on the animal control change order as far as funds allocated. Okay, just to bring you up to date on where we are on animal control. As you remember, it was on the 2016 SPOSS. We started collecting money on the 1st of April 2017. We write into RFP development. RFP was issued. I had a pre-bid meeting. RFP opened, went to Finance Committee, DOC approved the AE Services purchase order was issued. Ussery Rule started design. They started design with some work to assess other... Ustrey Rule started design, they started design with some work to assess other areas, to assess other, excuse me, animal control facilities. They did preliminary floor plan. Then their plan was complete on May 2018. That's when we presented the estimate to the board, and there was a little bit of sticker shock at that point. That's when we had various options that the board asked us to look into. Moving forward, since that design was completed in 2018, there have been some design standards that have, that were changed and adopted, that they were changed and then they were adopted at the beginning of this year. So we got the go-ahead green light, we actually submitted it before we got the green light because we knew it was coming, and it's going through the design review team at the county. And in order to get it up to current standards, we need to give the architect a little bit more money, a little bit more allowance, let me put it that way. So the original contract was 172. He did his assessment, which I talked about, and he can did the plans and specs. So we have paid him this much money to date. We have three allowances in here, 25 for geotech, 25 for material testing, and 25 construction assistance. We will use all the construction assistance money. We'll probably use about a quarter of that material testing money, and we'll probably use a third of this geotech money because of where we're building. And so I'd like to lessen the value of the geotech and put it in and award it or and use it for these changes. And for those changes, I'd like, Mr. Ustrey's going to come up and discuss or answer your questions as to what those changes consist of and why it costs $7,500.
Robert Ustrey, architect, good evening Commissioners. Kind of a little background, when we started the project, the code that was in place at the time was the international building code, and that was the 2012 edition. Currently, as Mr. Austin said, January of this year, state of Georgia adopted the 2018 edition of the building code. And with that came a fairly substantial number of changes. In addition to the IBC, another change that was made was to the international energy code. That went from 2009 code to the 2015 code. And therein also was quite a number of changes. To kind of give you a little bit of background, the changes to the energy code required changes to our wall sections and foundation plans to incorporate additional insulation, changes to the window specifications because of revised requirements for better windows or better insulated windows. Updating the code data was also required on our cover sheet, going through the building code, the new building code as it relates to the size of the building, square footage allowed for sprinkler systems and so forth. We went back and revised all of the code data on that sheet to make sure that we were still in compliance. The mechanical revisions required, all the HVAC units had to be updated, again, to meet the more stringent energy codes. The entire water piping system within the building was revised to comply with the new energy code as well. Water piping in the Kendall buildings was revised for the same reasons. The electrical drawing revisions, occupancy sensors were added to the electrical plans and dimmers that are now required in all the offices. There was also some civil engineering revisions made to comply with recent Glen County changes to our water and sewer ordinance. That's the short version, there was a lot of small details that were incorporated as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Ustrey, were these changes made that the state made, was that specifically for animal shelters or was that just general changes, I mean, general upgrades?
Commissioner Coleman, that was for all construction in the state, to include animal shelters, yes, sir.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, y'all have any more questions for Mr. Ustrey?
Mr. Austin, you telling us that we really can't go to bid without these changes to the design?
Well, my license requires that when we submit plans that they be fully compliant with the current codes. We have, Commissioner, we have gone ahead and made all those changes regardless, and regardless of whether this is approved or not, these plans will go forward with the changes.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, Commissioners?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve? Second. I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I call the motion. All those in favor, signal a vibration, right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Ustrey, could we buy a little bit more of your time? You don't charge like lawyers, do you? You don't charge like lawyers, do you?
No.
Okay, good, well, I'll buy a little more of your free time then. Mr. Ustrey, there are buildings, hotels that are being built in this community every day. Each one has a separate bathroom, each one has a sprinkler system, each room has a, for $150 a foot. Why are we at whatever we're at and $260 a foot or whatever it is, when part of it, when a great deal of it is a concrete slab, an insulated metal building that's air-conditioned? I just don't get it. When we did a shopping center, a vanilla shell was $105 a foot, and that's with 14 air conditioners on top of it. I don't understand how we get here, or I don't understand how we get out of this mousetrap, is what I'm trying to say, and do, and just go build a building, I mean.
Well, I can tell you, I have a lot of clients that would like to build a hotel for $150 a square foot. So far, we haven't, we haven't found that. You know, and in addition to that, cost, construction costs, if you've been keeping track of it lately, have really gone up substantially, just like the last time and from the time from 2006 to 2008, we had an acceleration in construction costs. Well, currently, we are under that same sort of acceleration. Now, I believe it'll plateau, we're starting to see things sort of slow down a little bit now. So now, in my opinion anyway, would be a good time to put this out for bids. I think you'll find some contractors that may be looking pretty hard for work.
That's the best thing I've heard in all this, let's put it out for bid.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, item 45, consider providing staff directions regarding the Kings Park pickleball court construction project. Who is Lisa? Did I see you back there? I'm over up here.
Good evening Commissioners. So in the fiscal year 20 budget, the Board of Commissioners approved $150,000 to construct six new pickleball courts. The site was selected to be at Kings Park, and staff worked on specifications and developed a site plan using the guidelines and best practices in the American Sports Builders Association Pickleball Court Construction and Maintenance Manual. The next slide is just a quick overview of the site plan that was developed by staff that was put out for bid. Bids were due on February 6th, we received three bids from different companies. All of these bids were considerably over the project budget of $150,000. So in light of that, bringing to you tonight several alternatives to provide direction to staff on those alternatives being reject all bids, revise the scope of work, and re-advertise the project, or award the lowest bid with FY 2020 recreation capital with the possibility of exploring value engineering options with the low bidder, or option three, providing alternative solutions. And the possible motions for consideration are up on the big screen there. And I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you, Lisa. Commissioners?
Lisa, what is the FY 2020 recreation capital access? Where are you finding that money?
The access is not probably an accurate word for that, it's probably misleading on that. The current balance in the FY 2020 recreation capital budget includes the $150,000 for the pickleball court project, $40,000 for the Neptune Park kiddie pool replaster project that you, tonight, rejected the bids on because they came in so far over budget and the window to complete that project passed. And then the remaining funds are for the project that you approved in the budget to resurface the six remaining tennis courts on St. Simons Island. So those funds are the capital. So they're not really excess, it's money that y'all appropriated for specific projects that if it was decided that you wanted to consider awarding the bid to reallocate and redistribute those funds for that purpose, knowing that those projects that were intended would potentially be delayed.
But what I remember when we rejected that at finance on the plastering of the kiddie pool, I mean, it's something that needs to be done, correct? I mean, if I'm not mistaken, did we, you were going to try to patch it, is that correct?
That's what we're doing, yes, sir. And the quotes that we received for that, we're going to do about a $2,500 patch job, that's about all we've got.
And, but, I mean, we still need to do this at a future date, why would we not put that money aside and maybe roll it into something for next year with next year's FY 21?
We could certainly do that, that was not the, that wasn't the motion that we put on the table for the finance committee to consider. But yes, sir, you're right, we're going to do patch jobs, which is what we did last year and what we're doing this year. So, but we did not come back with a recommendation to carry that forward to the next budget year for that same purpose.
But you didn't come to a recommendation saying use it for something else, correct?
If I remember correctly, the agenda item said that we would like to use a small, a very much smaller portion of that $40,000 to do a very reduced scope of work for a patch job and allow staff to get quotes, which we have done.
Right.
Lisa, have you all looked at an alternative site in view of the comments that we've gotten from the public?
We started looking at this, at sites for this back in May of 2019, when this was first brought forward for discussion, I believe at a Board of Commission work session or a finance committee meeting, I think it was a work session. So we've been looking at sites since then and have explored a variety of options, yes, sir. This seemed to be the best location because there's already pickleball there at that park with the tennis courts that are there, with the dual-use courts that are there. Anything else would disturb other amenities that are at those parks and would be closer perhaps to some of the neighborhoods. But we did look at Epworth, Dimory, and Kings Park as options, location options. There's a dog park currently on that site, and it does get used from the public. So there's, again, there's an amenity that's already there that would be sacrificed or scope of reduced. Yes, sir, you'd have to. So this was in a location that did not remove an existing park amenity, other than just the green space.
Excuse me, Lisa, did the suggestions that was made tonight by the lady that came up and suggested the, I think, Gascony area or somewhere in there, is what you just said a minute ago, is that what you're saying would apply to that area, or could you comment on that?
As far as perhaps putting a dog park at Gascony Bluff, is that, I think that might have been...
Well, no, I mean, she was suggesting putting the pickleball park, is that correct? Is that what they were talking about?
Yeah, I may misunderstood, I thought she was suggesting that you could perhaps build the pickleball complex at Epworth Park, which is where the current dog park location is, and because you'd be removing the dog park, perhaps relocate that to Gascony Bluff. And if that's the direction that the board would like to move in, we can certainly look at that option. We can, we could look at whatever options the board chooses.
I mean, if we're looking, let's look at it. I mean, I would certainly not want to rule it out. I mean, that is a suggestion from a citizen that apparently somebody else has not come up with until tonight. So, I mean, I'm open for everything. I mean, I think we consider, if we're going to, if we're going to try to do this, or if we're going to do this, I think we ought to do specifically for the pickleball players. I mean, I can sympathize with them trying to compete, and this group of pickleball slash tennis players is not going to get any smaller. And, you know, when it gets to be a real chore to be able to go out and play your sport, then things start going down. And, I mean, I played golf all my life, and what she said there hit the button. You don't just go out there and tee it up unless you're in a private club of some sort, but you go to these public courses, you got to have a tee time and the whole nine yards. So, I mean, I could see where the frustration would be from the pickleball players, but I can also see where there's frustration would be from the surrounding community around Kings Park. I personally don't think that that's the answer to the problem, but I would certainly like to see us look into the Gascony Park area over there. I mean, it's wide open, something to really consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I can say I've been involved in this since the inception, and we've looked at all these other areas, Commissioner Coleman, and I've tried to be additive, not reductive, meaning I saw no value in taking away the dog park at Epworth. I saw no value in converting two of the tennis courts to tennis center at Epworth that the tennis group wants to use for their sanctioned events. If we look at Gascony, we've got a frisbee golf layout there and parking for the boats that use the boat and fishing club. And we go down the list, and the fact remains that people have played pickleball at King Park for years. And if we put courts immediately adjacent to where those courts are now, it doesn't get any close to any houses, whereas these other areas, commonly, they're even closer to houses in these other areas than they are where they are in King Park. So my recommendation would be that we, are we going to continue to have people interrupt me there, Commissioner, or are you going to get control of this group? So anyway, my recommendation would be to reject the bids, to direct the staff to revise the scope of work. By that, I mean, put four pickleball courts in the area that we've walked multiple times as we've walked multiple of these other areas throughout the St. Simons Island area, and give the pickleball players their first four public courts, Commissioner Coleman, I mean, you made the analogy to public golf courses, there are no public pickleball courts for assigned use. There is a shared situation with tennis players, and that would gave rise to the conflict. So in doing so, I would recognize that the bids came in 50% over what we had agreed to in the budget, and that, to me, is not an acceptable solution. I'm hoping that by reducing the footprint to four courts, maintaining that tennis court in the Mallory Park, which theoretically would not be in the rotation for the sanctioned events, continue to have that as a dual-use court, resurfaced with new lines, and allow ultimately to have four standalone public courts and two dual-use courts. I think that one of the greatest points of contention that gave rise to a lot of the pushback from the residents, both here and outside the area, is a Facebook post that said we're taking down 19 live oak trees. There aren't 19 live oak trees in King Park, including the eight or 10 that Dave Austin and the people have planted over the years. So by... So by putting this smaller footprint in that area that we've discussed, Lisa, I think there might be one old semi-broken-down oak tree that need to come down and a couple of pine trees, but nowhere near the number of trees that would be required to do this. And hopefully, by decreasing the footprint, decreasing the scope of work by that, you know, the work required to prepare the site for this new public facility would hopefully come in in the range of $150,000. So that would be my proposal. And I'd like to make a motion to reject the bids that we have, direct the staff to revise the scope of work by putting four courts in the area as we've designated in King Park and re-advertise the project.
I'd like to ask a question to Commissioner Murphy. Do you play tennis or pickleball?
Do I play tennis or pickleball? I used to play a great deal of tennis. I've never played pickleball in my life.
Well, I mean, I haven't either, but you can still help these folks out. You don't have to be no expert about.
I'm trying to help those folks out. That's why I'm getting the only public courts in the entirety of Glen County dedicated to pickleball. That's my purpose.
Well, I mean, it apparently is interfering with some other folks, too. So, I mean, from what I'm reading, what I'm hearing, I mean, I just want to know, you know, are you speaking for these people out here that's going to be using these facilities? Are you speaking for Peter Murphy?
I don't know what you're talking about, Commissioner, and what?
Turned around and gave me the insult. You get one by him.
What insult? I didn't give you any insult. I don't know what you're talking about. No, I do not play pickleball. I don't play tennis now. I do play golf, but yes, I see the need for public dedicated pickleball courts on St. Simon's Island. I don't understand what your issue is.
Commissioners, we have a motion.
The Kings Park issue is what the issue is.
And you asked if we, Ms. Garganus, if we'd gone around and looked at all these different options, and I'm here to tell you, we've looked at them multiple times.
I thought I made it clear to her when I- I asked her just a second ago, have you looked at the area that was mentioned tonight?
The area that was mentioned tonight was the Epworth Dog Park. I've been there two or three times. Every time I go there, somebody is using the dog park. My point was, I want to be additive to the facilities and not remove a facility that others may be using to put in another facility in its place. So it's additive. And yes, we've looked at it.
Okay, Commissioners, we have a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion?
I have a few comments to make. You know, I didn't realize we were going to go to a motion that quickly, but anyway, I think the biggest lesson I've learned out of this whole process is, and hopefully I'll carry it forward as a Commissioner going forward, the next budget process, there's going to have to be compelling reason for us to submit a project that's not been properly vetted or budgeted, to be added on as an afterthought. And I think that's kind of where we're at here. It seemed like a good idea at the time. I voted for it, but as I have learned, the vetting process is important and the budgeting process is important. If I had to do it over again, I would suggest, okay, let's move that to FY 21 and let's have a thorough vetting and discussion with the staff and look at all the options instead of having all this discussion out, you know, back and forth in the public. In regards to the cost, I think we've talked about that. It's $150,000 was originally coming from savings that we had in certain funds and then we found out that, well, there was a double booking accounting area, era, so we didn't have it. So we're taking the funds out of fund balance. I think we have to keep it at $150,000. I don't think we need to be spending more than $150,000 than what we have. In regards to excess capital, you know, the best idea I've heard out of this whole discussion, I think, is the recreation, Parks and Recreation Master Plan. I know, Lisa, you've kind of wanted to see that happen and I think that's a good next step for us as a community. I hope Mr. Hours can make that happen for us because at some point, we have to start looking at what's our 10- and 15-year plan and what exactly do the citizens of Glen County want and need. And we don't really know that. We can measure by email and phone calls as Commissioners, but what is really out there that we need to be doing to make sure that we're addressing future needs? Now, any plan you put in place, there may be changes along the way, but until we have a plan, you know, the old adage, fail to plan, plan to fail. And I think this is sort of where we've gotten to is it's an afterthought. It's an afterthought that wasn't thought through thoroughly and now we're having to spend a lot of time. There are a lot of important things going on in our community. I'll be honest with you, we've spent a lot of time on pickleball and it shouldn't be that way. So my opinion would be to revise, send it back to the staff, ask them to review all options, and then to come back to the Board of Commissioners with a plan.
Thank you, Commissioner. We're back to the motion and the second. Any further discussion? I call the motion. All those in favor, second to five, or raising your right hand. It is five, four. Are those against? Same. Okay, two against. Motion passes. Lisa, thank you. You got anything for the next session?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion move to the next session.
Potential litigation, Commissioners.
Have a motion? Second. All those in favor? Okay.